Seven o'clock before meeting order, please stand for pledge. Okay, can I get a motion to accept amendments of April 4th?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
Seven minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. Ken?
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
I have good, all good news tonight. We had a really good month of February. We had, we put out some best effort we have, I think, since we've been operating. We did really well.
Wow.
Yeah, the total nitrogen was 1.1 averaging, 1.1 milligrams per liter going out of the plant.
That's the lowest you say?
That's the lowest average I think we've hit so far. That's pretty impressive.
Wow, yeah.
We did real well and some of the highlights I just wanted to mention, does that mean?
See that cord's tight?
Better? Better?
Is it plugged in? You got a scratchy voice. Check that down at the plug, chief. That's it, right there.
That will break it right.
It's the cord.
Probably bad cord.
Go ahead, cord.
I'll speed it off.
Not only some plug, but that's okay.
Anyway, I want to let you know that, you know, the issue we had with the lighting at Big L Pump Station has been corrected. We had the lights moved up out of the wet well area and we had a couple other items, deficiencies that were, needed to be explosion proof that were overlooked and we have since corrected that, those items now, which is, so we contacted Dan and we're going to go ahead and continue the cleaning of the wet well, of the Big L Wet Well. We had started doing that and then we realized that it wasn't the safest condition. We stopped, so we're going to go ahead and resume that. I think they, or 24th of the month or thereabouts, I think that's what we told me. So anyway, that's on the agenda and just to let you know that we had a number of reports that we turned in this past month. We, I wanted to let you know that we got the Tier Two update report to the fire company. We completed that and we sent it into Cecil County Department Emergency Services. There are two good, big reports. We did the, also the annual pre-treatment report for the IPP program, industrial pre-treatment program for the town. We got that completed. That was a big report too. So that was along with the other reports that we normally do. The other thing I want to let you know is that we hauled out about 90 tons of material so far this past month to John Quinn, a local farmer, Cecil County farmer. And so we've been moving some material. I expect to move maybe another 30, 40 tons yet.
So is all the sludge that you got now, has it all been processed and heated down?
Well, you know, that's ongoing. That process never stops. It's just an ongoing thing, you know? But we're, this, we're, this is, you know, last, I think I told you last year, last spring or early spring, we sent out correspondence to all the farms in Cecil County and all the farms in Hartford County, all the farmers, to let them know that we were producing, you know, the biosolids and we sent them, gave them all the information, you know, on the material. So, and I did, we did get some interest and this one farmer, John Quinn, and came down and we met with him and showed him everything we were doing and I think he was very impressed. So we were, he was unable, we were unable to get any out, any material out last spring because it was like too late because the window is, for that is early spring before the farmers plant and then maybe in the fall. So if you miss those two windows, chances are you're not going to remove it. So we got an early start this year, this 2012. So like I said, we hauled out 90 tons. That's a significant amount of what we produced this past year. So we still have a lot of material yet to remove, but we're working on it. And we have another farmer as well that we, that we, that got some material last year and he wants more this year. So once the word gets out, I think, you know, we'll be able to remove the material. They'll probably be coming in and getting it right out of the silo.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you, how that silo was full or how did?
Well, we filled that silo up and unfilled it probably, you know, 15, 20 times maybe.
How much does that hold, you know?
Off the top of my head, I'm, I'm going to say 80 tons, 100 tons.
That's, that's good.
It's a lot of material.
Yeah, it is.
But, but that's, that's kind of the big thing and I think it's all really wrong. I wanted to tell you, oh yeah, one other thing, we had CPR training at the plant for all of our staff, first aid and CPR. So we're all, and got the Figulator training for me. I'm not on the Figulator yet, we got to get that yet. Yeah, so things are.
Who conducted the training? Because I asked before a meeting about, you know, training that was on the part of staff here, so who was a responsible party?
Uh, I think it was.
American Recross?
That's what I was, yep. I believe that's who it was, yeah.
So they trained you all in total or did they train somebody to train?
No, they trained us all in total.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Good, good.
Any update on the water possibility that you presented and the figures?
The, well, I worked up some pricing, budgetary pricing for the Mayor Council to review for the capital program. And so I'm not sure where, I don't know if that was approved or not, but I do know that I talked with Louis and about the work that the Mayor Council wanted to do on their original well four. And I know that they, I think the mayor went down and looked at it with Louis and DPW because they have to put a, an access road into the well before we can get a well driller in there to, you know, clean the well because it's been sitting so long. I recommend that we clean it and, you know, swab the screen, which is not a big deal, but, and also TV it so you'll, we'll be able to see the condition of it. And then of course install pump and then, once that's done, then we can go ahead and, then we can do a lot, the rest of the work. DPW and, and my staff can put in, bring out online.
We can just check it, see how good it is without any permits and?
Yes, right.
But once we get ready to take it out of the ground, then we got to deal with MDE.
Well, you don't have appropriation permits, you get well permitted, that's the well.
Yes, yes. And once, once, if the Mayor Council goes forward with that well four and well two and any additional wells, the well driller will secure the well permit, the drilling permits. That's not, and then once that's done, then you'll do flow testing on all the wells to determine the withdrawal of the wells together and then apply for amendment to your existing appropriation permit, so.
Now, often times in school, and I know we're not in school, kids do science project and they have a hypothesis, intelligent guess. Is there any predictability before you go forth with this process to think that there might be something there? Because obviously you're going to put out money to try to determine and that's always a chance.
Well, I'm very confident that you're going to get, if you bring well four online and well two, I believe you're going to get 600, 500,000 gallons a day of water.
Together?
Together. I also think that down at the Elk Landing site is of real potential down there to get 300, 400 gallons additional flow a minute. So I think that you can really get some water. And I'm not the only one who feels that way because I had Schulte out there and John Gilman was with me, but Brad, I can't think, Brad?
Hartman.
Hartman. And, you know, they know a lot more about wells and a lot more about hydrogeology than I do and they're very confident. They think that there's a lot of water to be had. Now, you know, I don't think you're going to get a well that's going to pump a million gallons a day.
We're looking for backup.
But we're, yeah, but I think you can get smaller wells that can do 200, 300 gallons a minute wells. You know, I don't think you're going to get a 700 gallon a minute well, but you know, if you get four or five, 200, 300 gallon a minute wells, I think you'll be in good shape.
Hey, thanks.
Ken, I need to one question. Are they still, are they all going out of the same aquifer?
Well, that's a good question. Not exactly. The study that KCI contracted with Advanced Earth and Water or?
Advanced Land Water.
Okay. They looked at water in a confined aquifer, okay? Now, Elkton sits on top of an unconfined aquifer. So that, they didn't really look at the water in the unconfining aquifer and that's sort of what we're looking at. Now, that's a really interesting question. Now, well three, see, they said in their report that well three was in an unconfined aquifer. But when I talked to Schulte, they did a drilling, they told me that well three was actually in a confining aquifer. So you can have an unconfined aquifer and then you can go down further and into a confining aquifer. So it seems to me that in the unconfining aquifer, there's a lot of water in this area. Now, some people say that, now, there's pros and cons to unconfined aquifer. Let me give you an example. When I was at Aberdeen, we had 15 wells and all of our wells were in an unconfined aquifer. They were all averaged about 100 feet deep and all of them were considered unconfined aquifer. Now, they were subject, so if you're in an unconfining aquifer, you could be more subject to contamination just for, just because of the fact that they're shallower than a well that's in a confining aquifer. In a confining aquifer, you might have a layer of material that actually will, can help protect the underlying water from being contaminated. That's one of the, that's, that's a concern, okay? But I don't think that we have to worry about that now because our wells that we have right now are in an unconfined aquifer and they're, they're fine. There's no contamination. So that's why when that gentleman was here from MDE and they were talking about the well head protection and, and making sure that, you know, you put in, if you haven't already, and I think they're going to want the town to go forward and, and expand that well head protection program for the town. That member that you were here a few weeks ago or a couple months ago talking with the Mayor Council, there's money and they're going to pay for the study. So anyway, what you want to do is you want to look at the area, the recharge area and make sure that there's no, there aren't any activities going on that could possibly contaminate your water source, your groundwater or your surface water. You know, we're taking water out of Big L Creek, so I just, I heard something tonight that I'm raised, I'm a little concerned about, that there may be some contamination going on into Big L Creek and I was not told about that, so I'm going to investigate that. But that, that, that whole, the whole recharge area needs to be looked at and make sure that there are, there aren't any activities going on that could contaminate your water supply, whether it be Big L Creek or a groundwater supply or, you know, we have to make sure that doesn't happen.
The well at Knights Columbus, do you know what aquifer that's in?
I would say that that would be.
Unconfined?
It, I would say it's an unconfined aquifer. Now, it's, I believe it's 100, between 100 and 120 feet deep. Now, when I went down there, looked at that well, that, that well is online, it's being used and I, and I took samples out of the water and I didn't run a great deal of tests on it, but as far, I, I have no reason to believe that it's, it's fine.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, so, and it's a pretty good producing well. See, that's why, that's another reason why I'm confident that that area where the Knights Columbus is and of course in our other well locations and then, and I'm looking at the location down at the Elk Landing, I just, and of course, the, when they did the bore holes too next to the plant, they, they went down, I thought it was like a couple hundred feet before they hit bedrock and that's a good sign too. So they didn't really, when you did the bores, they, and they did, when they did the bore, they also did a test to determine the, the amount of sands that they went through. So when they did this bore, they found different layers of sand, which is good for water bearing, water bearing material. And they did find, you know, maybe 30 feet of water bearing material and a couple, when they went down into the ground, 200 foot down, they found two strata and they were about 30 foot in, in depth and width where they were water bearing soils. So I thought that test was, and, and the interesting thing about that was even though they used Brad Hartman's license to do that, so he had all the information up on that bore hole, so he gave that to me. He said it was very promising, very promising.
Good. You might make a yes.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Yep.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome. I'll talk to you later.
Okay, I have a proclamation. Whereas the National Park Trust has designated May 19, 2012 as the second annual National Kids to the Park Day and whereas the National Kids to Parks Day empowers and encourages children and their families to get outdoors and visit American parks and whereas it is important to introduce a new generation to our national parks to offset the decline in park attendance over the last decade and whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity and whereas National Kids to Park Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants and whereas the National Kids to Park Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, I Joseph Alfonso, on virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the town of Elkton and on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and citizens of our community, do hereby proclaim to participate in National Kids to Park Day and encourage the residents of Elkton and the surrounding areas to mark time on May 19, 2012 to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state or national park. In witness thereof, we have unto set our hands and seal this 18th day of April. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. All righty, we have a public hearing, so the public hearing now opens for resolution R42012, Union Hospital, Cecil County, refinance, refinancing bond issues. Cheryl?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good.
This is a public hearing with respect to the proposed issuance of bonds for the benefit of the hospital. You may remember that a few weeks ago I was here with Ms. Byer from the hospital requesting that you entertain the proposed financing, which is going to refinance certain bonds that were previously issued to finance facilities at the hospital. This is sort of like refinancing your mortgage, the interest rate environment is lower than it was back in the 2000s when they initially issued the other bonds and so they can take advantage of that and save money on their interest costs. And so we were required to hold a public hearing under the Internal Revenue Code and so that's what this hearing is.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone have anything they'd like to say in favor or against this? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay, then this public hearing is now closed. Okay, the board have any question, anything?
No.
All right then, can I get a motion to accept the resolution R42012?
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think you need to commit the letter signed also.
We've gotten that.
Okay, start that. Okay.
Louis?
I don't have anything and I wanted to bring to the board's attention the resolution, I mean, the ordinance I prepared regarding vacant building registration, just, at just for distribution so you can review it and we'll bring up, I suggested in my email to you earlier today, if we perhaps, if you review, we can discuss it next workshop.
Has Norman just received a copy of this also?
Nobody's received it. You're the first ones.
Oh, okay.
Everybody will have it.
Okay.
Old Business, anything I have, just once, reminder again, this Saturday, Pollution Prevention Day, Department Public Works, seven o'clock to three o'clock. If anybody can bring hazardous materials and or household trash down to Public Works that day and there will be refreshments for everybody. All right, Joe, anything?
I just have one thing on Old Business. We have received some information on the zoning of amendment for clinic. Has that, have you looked at those, Norman and Craig Trossel had set it out, I guess, March 6th with different scenarios here in other towns?
I've looked at that, yeah, but I have not talked to Craig.
To make a decision? I'm sorry?
I said Jason's been working with it hard. I have not talked to Craig about it this time.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, great.
We're working on that.
Perfect. That's all I have for Old Business.
Okay, anything?
Just wanted to ask a question about the Recreation Center. I know we're planning on going to visit, is it a couple sites?
Right.
In Hartford. Just for clarity, what's the purpose other than just to see the sites? We have a signs and location that the Department of Parks and Recreation has already decided on, but what are we going to look at other sites for? I mean, the input, I understand the input's there, but?
Just to see if there's anything, before we go spend more money than we did to draw the plant, if there's anything that we might want to add or subtract, just see what they got and we might want to just spruce ourselves. Spruce ours up a little bit more or something, we forgot to add, so I don't want to draw something up, spend the money, all of a sudden we think, oh, we forgot that. It just, it gives us better insight as to what we're looking at, I think. That's all. Just give us some ideas so we can make it right.
Okay, because I talked to the Director, Mary, and I just felt his direction based on what she needed in the area, I mean, in the Recreation or Community Center was fine with me, but if that's the purpose, I just wanted to find out.
That's all, just get a better idea so we can do this right, that's all. Is that it?
Yeah.
Got anything?
Well, to add, I guess the specs and all will be presented thus before any final thing, correct?
Yeah, I'm sure, yes.
Okay, that's it.
And I guess I just, I guess I just want to add a little to that. Along with, you know, reviewing the other possibilities, I just want to make sure that the board keeps in mind that we could possibly be looking at this project in phases and always keep that in mind. To start at one point and kind of just add to, because, you know, again, the goal is not to, for this to be a big expense for the town, but to pursue many other opportunities and kind of build on it as we go, I would hope. Just to add a little to that. And Louis, I'm looking at the, the code enforcement flyer, the property housing standards. This will go out in the mailing of the announcement for the relocation of the building.
There are four, four, three, four, there go after, over 5,000? Okay, I'm just 5,000 right now.
Okay, that's awesome. I appreciate you including that. And again, I just, I just want to restate, you know, the feeling and the whole process of code enforcement being, you know, again, a process. We're going to, we have to continually educate and I think this is a good step to make sure that we're reaching out to the community and again, educating them on what's expected. Thank you.
I mean, for, I got a few things to say, but I'd just like to mention the fact that we are deeply saddened to hear the news of Senator Baker passing and to say he was a great citizen for the town of Elkton and for this county. He did a great job down in Annapolis and he helped this town a great bit. Remember when we did our streetscape, he was instrumental in getting us our money to put those lines underground and get the town looking the way it is and he will be slowly missed. Louis, you sent us an email on the grease inspections, have we decided to change that over to Public Works now?
I don't know if they've met yet. I don't know. But I've sent that memorandum that to change it over, but I don't know if they've met. I'll have to let, find out from Dan and get back to you.
And trash. I looked over the charter in regards to trash and knew we have a problem in one area and charter specifies a couple of things here. I just, that as far as preservation of peace and good order for securing persons and property from violence, danger or destruction and for the protection and promotion of health, safety, comfort and convenience and welfare of happiness of the residents and visitors of our town. And it gives the Commissioners powers uncertain a lot of things and one of them is garbage and that is to prevent the deposit of any unwholesome substance either or on private or public property and to compel its removal to designated points, to require slopes, garbage, ashes and other waste and other wholesome material to be removed to designated points. And then, of course, it's unlawful for any person to throw, dump or deposit any trash, litter, junk or house refuge or filth on public property. Well, you know, we have a problem down there on Cal Lane and it seems to be becoming a real problem for Public Works. The people just seem to, on that one island there, that they just come out and dump it on that island. It's a constant, it's, it's all the time. They just feel like, that's where the town trash company. There's got to be some way we can fix it. I know we have signs down there that says no dumping allowed, but I just feel we need to put a better sign up there or come up with a better ordinance stating that the fine, if they're caught, they will be fined a amount of money or something else. And there's something a little bit stronger because it's just becoming a real problem for Public Works. And then, of course, I get complaints about it all the time as well. I don't know if anyone else has or not, but it's become a dumping ground. I don't know if anyone else has or not, but it's become a dumping ground. So I know what we can do to try to correct that problem and try to enforce it a little bit better. Can we do anything?
Absolutely. We can, we can put up more signs. I don't know if it can make people care about their neighborhood.
Well, we can put more verbal signs.
Or send letters out or whatever.
Tell them that they'll be fined. I think, why don't we have, fine them for dumping trash if they're caught and/or prosecuted?
Sure. I was down there, I went by there today and there's more trash out there.
Oh, right.
They cleaned it all up.
Yeah.
It's ubiquitous. Is the right term. They have absolutely no regard for that area. For some reason, the people who live there, not all the people, I'm sure, but I can put them out.
That way, let the chief know that those guys down around, they just have me going past through there and catch anybody, then they can, they can get them. The other thing is, the General Assembly has gone home for a while and hoping we don't have to go to the doomsday budget, but out of that whole mess, we were fortunate enough to get some money. And that was Meadow Park for $24,000 we got. Still has to go before Public Works, but it's in there and hope we can get that $24,000. Even Thompson Elementary School, it's got $100,000 out of it and Rising Sun Elementary School got $1 million out of it. So Cecil County did get some money out of that.
And Cecil College.
And Cecil College, right, that's right.
And Science Building.
Cecil College got $2 million.
And a school.
No, some theater got $100,000 and Jacobtown Gas House, Court Depot, got $80,000. So Cecil County did make out somewhat in this General Assembly.
But for matter of record, the minutes ought to reflect what the $24,000 for?
Dog park.
Dog park?
Dog park. Okay. That's it. All right, Joe?
I had a couple of seniors come in my office yesterday that live in the senior apartments on High Street and were asking if there's somewhere we, some way we could put signage or something for a crosswalk there. Now that the weather's nicer, they're all taking walks, there's two people in a wheelchair and there's nowhere, no crossing area for people to slow down, like a signage or something.
There's crosswalk there though, down.
Down further, yeah.
Yeah. You wouldn't put, couldn't put two of those together. You'd have to eliminate the other, the other you put in because of the request for people crossing there from, you know, for that.
Well, before that, we possibly just put some signage maybe to slow down for pedestrian crossing.
We're also looking at, by the way, to help out too, the CBG money to do a sidewalk retrofit there up and down that aisle for the, for those two, because they had that problem with some of the sidewalks, so having to take CI, take a look at it. Is that it?
That's all.
All right, anything?
Other than, I was listening to a conversation with some kids in school and I wanted to add something, but Louis, or maybe Dick Reed, when was the underground tunnel at the railroad closed? Remember kids used to go to school, they can go on the bridge or they run under through the tunnel? I'm trying to think, or what was the date of the possibility when that was closed?
My God, years.
Well, just try to find out if you can. I just wanted to share that with them.
That's the underground tunnel with the train?
With the train. You should be an active, very active. That's about it. I thought it was back in the 60s, but I'm not sure.
Maybe, no, after the train stopped, maybe?
When did the train stop?
It was in the 80s, wasn't it?
I don't know.
I think so. Start getting them. Wes?
What are you going to read about the water there on that?
What's up?
Are you experienced?
I'm here on behalf of the Greater Elkton J.C.s. As you know, the Greater Elkton J.C.s are a nonprofit organization that helps the Elkton Town residents and children as well as the Cecil County residents through donations and events. We're asking for your approval to allow us to host a Fun in the Sun Festival on June 30th from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. The event will take place off of Muddy Lane on the 14 Acres, otherwise known as the Bingo Truck Stop. We'll have four local bands from Philadelphia to Elkton to perform music from jazz, country and Top 40. We're projecting about 800 to 1,000 people to attend. We've contacted the local hotels in the area, the restaurants, tourism board, as well as the economic development of Cecil County and so far, everyone's expressing their enthusiasm for this event. We have a security team and a trash team in place to ensure no damage occurs to residents adjacent to the property. And upon approval, we will send letters to the nonprofits, i.e. the Singly Fire Company, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts and fellow J.C.s to sell food and work the event so they can raise funds in this difficult time in which donations are so tough to come by. If you look at the diagram, that'll show you, I don't know if anyone's ever been out there to the 15 Acres.
Do you have from, the tells on that?
Correct.
Did they give you written permission on the 15 Acres?
Correct. I've talked, I do not have the written permission yet. We're in verbal agreement with them. The broker is Rick Leopold. He's in Aruba right now and he believes that there will be an agreement with this. We're under a time string here because of the 60 days that you need to have before to have the event, to have it approved.
Is this, is this private property?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's if you're on state or...
State, so there's no 60 days?
That's to close a road, the permits.
Okay.
And it's 90 days for a new event and 60 days for an ongoing event. But you're on private property here, so I think you, I might be, you need the property owners.
Right, and he'll be back in town on the 25th. That's why, well, we, we're the J.C.s.
They folks are broker, he doesn't know it, does he?
Correct. No, he's, he's in the negotiating force.
Okay.
And the reason the J.C.s wanted me to come tonight, because we thought we had to make that 60-day deadline, so that's why I wanted to get in before you met again. And Mayor, we wouldn't have missed the 60 days.
And too, when we have to get, have written permission and knowing that first and it's been signed, we can...
Yeah, that's, that's it.
And it's on his property.
So we don't even need to come?
Not, it's on his property.
I'm sure we should do something because there's a lot of people and as far as traffic coming in there as well.
And we're also gonna hit the 15 acres, for sure.
If you went to police protection, you would have to notify our police department, probably work out something with respect to law enforcement response because if you had an activity, if you had something going on out there and something, a bit negative happened, you couldn't have two or three officers, something you'd not...
It would be like when they have the big things at Bob Jackson's farm. It's his private property and they don't...
But that's county, that's why.
No, but still, it's, it's, it's his farm, it's private property.
Right, that's what threw us off, I guess, because we thought since it was in the town limits, that we had to come here to get permits and things like that.
No, it's somebody's private property, that's his property, it belongs to him. It's he who be responsible for everything, anything goes wrong.
Correct. Okay.
On any, like residential houses around there?
Correct, there's, we've talked to those folks. Correct, we have. We're getting letters drawn up so they could sign them. We were gonna bring as well.
What were their, what were their feelings, just yours?
Was the security and trash was the big thing. They wanted to make sure we're gonna post two security guards, even if we had to pay for them, right there on their property, so nobody would do anything. And we'll still do that.
Have you been out there lately?
I've been out there at least eight times in the past three days.
Oh, okay, because they put that barrier up to make sure people can get in there because we had such a trash problem.
Correct.
We have sent them notices, cleaned it out and they did.
They did, really?
Yeah, they did a good job, yeah.
And this is, what this is gonna translate to, I'm working with, you know it's for sale. They're asking 4.2 million and I'm working with four investors who want to put like an amphitheater out there and have about 8,000 to 10,000 people draw there. We're super duper close on that, but they wanted us to do these little ones first to see if there was any draw before they invested about $7 million.
In this weekend, the same weekend as the, you think about Chesapeake City?
Canal Day, correct. So we're gonna tie it in there. We're, we're gonna tie it in there and have shuttle service.
You're gonna tie it to Chesapeake City?
Not tie it as far as the same events that they do, our music is totally different and...
You're gonna shuttle back towards Chesapeake City?
Correct, for the bode.
You show parking here too, Wes? I mean, you've spoken to a lot of people, you're gonna have enough parking for all those people?
Yeah, this only shows a few parking spaces here, but we looked at it and if you've been out there, from where they blocked it off to the, there's a fence a few hundred feet back, we estimate you can fit about 3,000 cars there.
Talking in the grass and everything?
In the grass areas and there's a lot of tree growth already, so a lot of that's gonna come down. It's gonna really put a big name on for, for the town here if we can get this to go.
So how would you shuffle the traffic in?
Well, that's what we thought we had, we have a plan already made up for, for to present to you after it's got approved in the process. We were gonna hire the town at the light there as well. We've worked with the hotels to do shuttle service, so they would get $10 off for staying there and we have a free shuttle to the different hotels to and from there.
Do you have a promotion agency you're working with for this? Because you only have two months.
For this one, yes. All the, there's four or five bands already lined up. They've played at, from Deer Park, they're out of Philly, they've played at Deer Park and different areas around here.
What bands do you have so far?
It's called Porteroy, High Jinks, Tristan and the Noise. And there's one other one.
You know how the Blues have...
Well, believe it or not, one of the promoters we're working with is friends with the Temptations and he guarantees that he's gonna get the Temptations here. So, I mean, this is gonna be big.
Temptations?
Temptations. There's one left, there's one of them left.
There is one left.
There is one, I know. Temptation, yeah.
Temptations only now, I guess.
But we're gonna have blues and jazz festivals, I mean, there's, we've been meeting for, I guess, about six weeks now and they really have a big, big thing going.
Now, is there an admission to this or what?
It's $25 for this, what we're doing now, just to get it off on the ground. We're doing it during the day so that way it wouldn't be loud at night and things like that. They're talking about building an amphitheater down in there, sort of like Merryweather Post Pavilion.
Yeah. That would be nice.
I hope no one steals mine, I dare.
All right.
So I apologize for taking your time, I, we all thought that we had to come here. So, yeah, now you guys all know about it, it's public knowledge. Thanks for your time, anyway.
Thank you.
Sure. Is there a junior?
Yes, it's my son. That's the board.
Dave?
Thank you guys a lot for participating today.
That's good.
I'm hanging in there, how are you doing?
How'd you get your foot?
I got a spare.
That's good.
Okay, Dave Fordyce, 1150 Sage Street, right behind American Home and Hardware. I'm here to talk to you about two issues tonight, different than the one I'm usually come here for. First issue is public intoxication and vagrancy and the second issue is dumping, which I found Mayor Fasona's comments interesting, but, but I'm just gonna go through one at a time. These pictures were all taken from my property, my front porch, by my camera, by myself. The date and timestamp you can see there. This individual, on the first page, his name is Tony, he's known, he is a known, there's no nice way to say it, he's a known drunk.
Tony Bolot.
I don't know his last name.
Go ahead, yeah.
I can tell you that he saw me taking pictures and he, here I am, so we called the cops on him and he was, he was removed, but this is an ongoing problem. I also want to draw your attention to this concrete wall here, it's a retaining wall, it's directly across from my front door and I'm gonna ask the town to do something about that. On page number two is the trash that he left once he was removed. You'll note it's Natural Ice that appears to be the brand of choice in the neighborhood. On third page, there's another individual, I don't know his name, but he's wearing a red jacket. When we saw him, he was passed out over the wall, then a policeman came up, buzzed his horn a couple times, chased him off, policeman left, the guy came back, we had to call the police and he was chased off a second time. On the fourth page...
And if you notice, the guy who, in the blue shirt on the first page is also the same character in the red on the second page.
Um, no, I don't think they're the same gentleman.
I think so, but go ahead.
No, no, the guy on the first has a full beard.
Yeah, but...
The guy, the guy on the first page has a full beard. Okay, now, on the fourth page, it's like old home week. You got both the gentleman in the red jacket and the guy on the first page who's in a red t-shirt there. When I started taking pictures, I had to flash on my camera and I saw the flash and hit, hit the beard. So that's issue number one. Issue number two, which you'll see on the next page, when I was going over to take a picture of the trash, because I knew I was gonna be coming to talk to you guys, I heard a noise, I turned around and there's a gentleman there dumping at the, at the other corner on McCall Street, right there. It's a white truck, if you turn the page, you can see that he has Delaware tags and I have a really good camera. I was surprised at how good the camera is because I picked up his tag number. It's a Delaware tag, I believe it's a commercial license and the, the number is 28768. So, I'm asking the town of Elkton to do two things. First one is, is to either remove that concrete retaining wall or make it unsitable. It's become a park bench and it's become a park bench for public drinking and going on. My wife is home alone most of the day and I'm a little worried about that, so, you know, I don't know which is more expedient for, for the town to do, but this has been an ongoing problem since I've been here in 2005, it's just becoming unbearable. As far as the second issue goes, I would like the town of Elkton to write the appropriate Delaware authority where that truck is registered and have that Delaware authority write the gentleman that owns the truck, that he's been identified, he's been observed dumping in my neighborhood and to cease and desist or else there'll be some, you know, whatever the appropriate penalty is. And so, Mr. George, I, I gave you this because I have been told that that retaining wall is the city of Elkton property. I'd like a letter from you telling me one way or the other.
I'd pretty much say it's not.
Big a pardon?
I could pretty much talk and tell you it's not our wall. Went to check the property lines, but I doubt it. That's, that's off my head.
Okay, I would like a determination.
We'll look into it for you.
Okay, I appreciate that. And Chief Ryan, I would appreciate if you, if you would follow up on the dumping thing. I will say, I've observed this before, I just happen to be very fortunate to be looking I, I will say, I've observed this before, I just had to be very fortunate to be looking with a camera right when he was doing it, so, you know.
Yeah, you're, that's pretty good, your first one, but we have noticed, we've had people that we've known that's come from, from outside Delaware, come in and dumping stuff in our developments.
I've seen people dump at that spot before.
That's, that's pretty good, that's something that, we knew, our Public Works knows some areas in town, they're dumping them because there's, there's stuff there all the time.
Yes.
So, we're just trying to see if we can get, catch them as well.
Okay. Well, this will give you a starting point.
That's good, very good, you did a good job.
I made a mistake, what I was saying, and of course, I didn't see the, the guy on the front is also on the fourth page, if you look in the red.
Yeah.
Yes.
So he must be a regular there.
Yes, he is.
He was...
Like, like I said, you know, Halloween a year ago, uh, Halloween night, when the, the women and the kids are out trick-or-treating, he was literally crawling up the sidewalk, and we had to call the cops on, I mean, crawl, you know, uh, drinking goes on, and it starts pretty early in the day sometimes, and Bobby Ann was having her class out there on the, uh, on the blacktop in the park, right, when some of this was going on. So, it's, it's a real issue.
Another question to you, do they live there, or do they just migrate there from some house in that specific area? Or that's just become a hangout?
It's become, it's become a hangout, there, there's a lot of hanging out that's going on in the woods over by, um, West End Gardens, and over by the Navy, I guess it's called Navy now. There's an awful lot of traffic, you can see the, the grass is worn away from people going back and forth.
And, and I think that one of the neighbors also called me about, since the Oceanic gas station received their liquor license, they're going back and forth through that area and drinking there.
There, there, there's a lot going on, there really is, so...
We were where that one little section, too, right behind Oceanic, that we looked at. Public Works, we went back there, it's a total mess, but they're gonna be cleaning that up, too.
Okay, there, there was a tree that fell very recently, and she, my wife and I went back and took pictures of what was there, and we, we found, this was back in the late winter, truthfully, dismembered deer, you know? There were deer parts in this trash can, they were there, there were deer parts that were stacked up, and we took pictures of it, and there was some, I think it was, the rest of the carcass was wrapped up in a, um, in a, in like a blanket with rope on it, and I didn't go to look at that. I'm willing to do a lot for the town, but I think I draw the line there.
Yeah.
All right, well, please consider what I've said, and please help us out.
I asked you, uh, this, this picture was taken last Saturday?
Yeah, the day...
For dumping?
Um, yeah, is that the 14th, Saturday?
When something like that is occurring, it'd be good if you would call, so we could respond out there at that time.
Okay, I just noticed, when he saw me aiming the camera, he took off, but I agree...
But that way, you get a little bit faster immediacy than five, six days later.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Very good. Nothing else? I'd like to get a motion to have a closed meeting, uh, before a contractual is awarded or bids are opened, discuss the matter directly related to a negotiation strategy, annual the contents of a bid or proposal. A public discussion and disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the board to participate in the competitiveness bidding for the proposed process. So I can get a motion that...
I'll, I'll make that motion, but before that, Commissioner Hicks and I asked a question. When the $24,000 that's been appropriated for the dog park, does, will it take $24,000? And, what's my second question? And if it doesn't take that much, what did you do with the remainder of the money?
I'm sure we could spend it out, but I, Mary put in an estimated, that's what it would cost her, so, uh, I'd have, we'd have to check with Mary to see if that's gonna take the full amount.
It's an open space grant, Mary put in, she told us about last week, so it has to go towards parks and playgrounds.
Open space?
Open space grant she applied for.
So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to go to a dog park?
Well, that's what she, she applied for, and that's what she got it for.
And, and that's the question I asked, is who asked for a park out there? I mean, even though she applied for it, we hadn't...
I think we had a discussion on it, and on the board meetings.
Not at Meadow Park.
It's been quite a while since that happened, about that.
Now, there was a park, uh...
You'd mentioned something about the dog park.
There was a suggestion for a park over in Delancey Road, but not at Meadow Park. I just talked about the people letting their dogs dump there, not no dog park. We, we got better things, we can be building for the kids and for the dog park.
This can't be used for other things.
I understand that.
It's only for that.
If that's the case, then we haven't...
That's, that's through the application process, but, right?
Well, what I'm saying is, uh, they, they can't use it for other purposes, if the board feels that it's not a good appropriation money, we can still turn it down.
Okay, that's the point I'm making, right?
And we'll use that money for other things. It's up to the board having it.
The point I'm making is, it's been, uh, awarded for us, but no one suggested we're putting a park, a dog park out there, because we talked about liability, for one, who's gonna be responsible, in case somebody gets bid, and, okay, we, we talked about a dog park on Delancey Road, I'm just bringing this up.
Yeah, we're talking about fencing issues.
Yeah, so, what I'm saying is...
A lot of different things.
That's what this is all.
Okay, so all I'm saying is, we need to discuss it before we start saying, yeah, just 'cause we got the grant, we're putting it up there.
You can get it, yeah.
Okay.
It's allocated, there's a lot of steps to it. If the board decides they don't want it, we can send a letter to them on decline. It's only allocated, it's not granted.
True, yeah.
Well, that's the point I'm making, we need to decide whether we want a dog park out there before we start tying up money that we haven't received, or we're trying to apply for it. That's my point I'm making.
All right, so, do we want to have a dog park, can settle it now, because we got, we'll have to let them know that...
No, you cannot turn down a grant money that has not been approved yet.
Well, we split it, then we have the motion, and we figure it out now, and when it's approved, then tell Mary she's gonna deny it.
Why is everything gonna be voted on at the very last split minute? We just heard about this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you don't know...
Mary applied through a grant for moving space money from the state of Maryland.
For specifically a dog park?
For, you have to have a specific project.
We didn't have any other projects in the book, other than the dog park.
It's something that they are funding right now, I understand that, but it's something they're funding, so she applied for it. She received a verbal that there's a possibility, it was sent in an email, that she will be, this grant will be approved. So it's not there yet, I would suggest highly not to send a letter or make a statement saying you do not want grant money that has not been allocated yet for the town of Elkton.
She might have put in for other items, because sometimes she puts in a list of things, and they look at what we submit, and then they pick something and say, well, we'll give them this. And a lot of times, she's submitted numerous items, and we don't only get one out of the item, all the items she's submitted. So we'd have to find out if she's submitted any other items besides this. Okay, we can wait and see if it gets, it's a long process, yet, it'll be a while before we even find out if it gets to Public Works.
She said probably not till October, maybe.
Yeah.
It's that long a process.
Okay, the caucus, I'm, I'd say, move...
Okay, have a second.
Uh, second, I'd like to add in on that for, um, personnel discussion also, so that's gonna be the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, displaying, uh, um, demotion, I mean, demo, it wasn't, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees of, or officials over whom the town has jurisdiction. I'd like to add that as part of, as a closed session.
Okay, now, is that two separate, because I'll, I'll second, I'll second, I'll second yours.
Actually, you don't have a second yet, for your first.
I thought you had put them together.
We need a second, so it's just gonna be one session.